This is a call to meeting to order. This is a committee of the whole which is convening for the purpose of discussing our budget. And welcome, members of the audience. Thank you for joining us, citizens. That's a great word, isn't it? Jerry, can you take us through the agenda, please? And so we can get started. Thank you. Just give us an overview of our agenda today. Thank you.
The first thing on the agenda, Human Rights Commission will be making a presentation around 10 minutes and then probably be some questions. After this discussion, then we'll move into the discussion as requested by Councilmember Gordon and Ms. Henson, Councilmember Henson, to discuss the positions eliminated that are included in the FY 2011 budget. And then hopefully, we can get to voting the Council on Link issues up or down. So we're going to have a full day.
All right. Okay, Jerry, so why don't you try to, you're going to be available to keep us as much as we can, just to remind us of our schedule. We also discussed last week that we would hold available for reconvening after the work session today, depending on how far we get today. Jerry, why don't you take us through, while you're here, the meeting's schedule, just so we know where we are and how much we've got to get, how much we need to accomplish before the established time of ratifying the budget. Now, when I ask that, you know, I'm keeping in mind that every year that I've, since I've been on the council, we have, we have scheduled a meeting to pull things together that was not, that had not been on the schedule originally.
So on the schedule, you know, today's the 8th, and we're at 11 o'clock, and if need be, then as you've indicated, Vice Mayor, then we would probably have a meeting at the conclusion of the work session, just recess this meeting and then reconvene it. And after that, we have two other meetings scheduled, one on the 10th, this Thursday, at 5:00, and then the final.
And that one, hold on just a second, that's before the, we've got a council meeting, right?
Yeah, on the 10th, yes.
So we only have two hours available to us on the 10th, as it is currently contemplated, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. And then again, on Tuesday at 8:00?
8:00 a.m.
Tuesday, the 15th.
That's right.
All right. Go through and just remind us of that, the agenda for those two meetings.
On both meetings, if needed, we will be dealing with the Council on Link recommendations that haven't been discussed, if there are any individual council member recommendations that any of you guys would have. And also, what's coming are late items that budgeting is working on. So at the end of all of that.
And we'll be able to be reconciling as we go. That's been the model that we have taken in the past.
That's right.
Reconciling the late additions with the, with the revenue number.
Well, any changes are not only revenue, there could be revenue.
Right, and expenses, right. I understand.
Revenue or expenses.
Revenue and expenses, right.
Any changes to the mayor's original proposed budget that are being brought forth for council's concerns.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
I just have a quick question. If today, after the work session, we feel like we need a fair amount more time, is it possible we might move the Thursday, 5:00 meeting earlier? Is that?
Just looking, I think that would make sense.
Just to kind of be thinking ahead.
Councilmember Gordon's suggestion is that depending on how far we get today in this session, and whether or not we pick it up again after the work session, we have the option of also moving, moving up the meeting on Thursday, the 10th. Right now, it's scheduled for 5:00. So, you know, I would endorse that. Any objections to that, that we move it up to what, 4? Yep. All right. Councilmember Martin.
It's possible I'm going to be late for that. I have a previous appointment with, I'm taking my mother to the doctor.
If you could join us, then. All right. So let's go ahead and put that in our calendars now, that that meeting will start at 4:00 on the 10th, instead of 5:00.
Do you want that meeting in chambers or on the 5th floor conference room?
Typically, we've done this meeting on the 5th floor. It's scheduled for the 5th floor now. Right? Okay. So we'll continue with it on the 5th floor.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sutter before we proceed? All right. We have our presentation now, then, by the Representatives of Human Rights Commission.
Good morning. My name is Beth Hartman. I'm currently the Treasurer of the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission. And I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak with you about a situation that is critical to the people of Lexington Fayette County and to the urban county government. The Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission is the agency in Lexington and Fayette County that enforces civil rights legislation. By statute and ordinance, the urban county government is obligated to maintain the existence of the Human Rights Commission. I'm here to talk to you today because the existence of the Human Rights Commission is currently at risk. I'm going to go into some details about the specifics of the situation, and it is a financial situation, but first, I want to give you just a little bit of background on how we got to the place that we are today. As you know, the longtime Executive Director of the HRC was terminated last fall. Subsequent to this termination, the Commission learned of the egregious fiscal mismanagement that had taken place in the Human Rights Commission. The Commission itself had not been informed of the reality and gravity of the financial situation. These circumstances came to light around the beginning of the year as a new executive committee was being installed. We have come to learn that by the beginning of fiscal 2011, the Human Rights Commission will be in debt to the tune of approximately $118,000. And I want to again emphasize that the fiscal mismanagement that led to this situation took place prior to the terms of any of the current officers. Since taking office, the new leadership, and we are volunteers with challenging careers of our own, have been working feverishly to do whatever has been needed to keep the HRC in operation and to meet all payroll obligations to the employees. We have had to, first, we have had to spend time learning, learning in depth how the finances work and to understand the scope of the challenges that we were facing. We are working to resolve any managerial and procedural processes that may have contributed to the current financial crisis, and we are committed to responsibly budget in a way that pays off the Human Rights Commission's debts while maintaining the critical functions of the Commission. But first, we need to have sufficient funding to stay in operation. Clearly, we've come to speak to you this morning because the proposed amount that is budgeted for the Human Rights Commission for fiscal 2011 is not enough to keep the Commission in operation. We are asking for a total budget allocation of $245,320 for fiscal 11, so that the Human Rights Commission can remain in operation and establish a sound fiscal foundation for the future. This represents a 40% increase over the proposed allocation of $185,500. I realize that such a significant increase warrants ample justification. First, allowing the Human Rights Commission to close is not an option for the urban county government. As I stated earlier, the existence of this agency is mandated by statute and ordinance. This is the only agency in Lexington Fayette County that enforces civil rights legislation. Clearly, these functions are essential to our community, and the city, its citizens of Fayette County need to have a means of recourse when discriminatory practices come to light. In addition, there is one situation which may be the most critical to some of you. Allowing the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission to close would likely cost the urban county government some or all of a $4.5 million community development block grant, which stipulates that the urban county government provide adequate financial support to the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission, and that urban county government funding is expected to support the overall agency. You were each provided with packets prior to this meeting, I believe late last week, that contains a good deal of documentation regarding the points that I'm making this morning. What we are requesting of you is adequate funding. The amount that we're asking for is a humble amount in comparison to what's at risk. What constitutes adequate funding under the current circumstances is a complicated question. One illustration of funding levels is shown on a chart in your packets that compares operational funding of each of the three Human Rights Commissions in Kentucky, the Louisville Metro Human Relations Commission, the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights, and the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission. This is the chart that's in your packets that I'm referring to. And some of the, some of the data that can be gleaned from looking at this chart and the numbers include that the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights and the Louisville Metro Human Rights Commission each receives 87% of its funding from local or state government. In comparison, the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission receives 51% of its funding from the urban county government. Lexington Fayette is yellow in the charts. You can tell because it's the lowest bars. This same chart shows the productivity of staff over in this corner, and demonstrates that the staff of the Lexington Fayette HRC closes a higher number of complaints per staff than either of the other two HRCs. Not only is the investigative staff of the Lexington Fayette HRC more productive in their handling and closing of cases, but Lexington Fayette is the only one of the three HRCs that does not have staff positions dedicated to community relations. So unlike the other two HRCs, Lexington Fayette's investigative staff must perform community relations duties in addition to their investigative responsibilities. So they are again providing a far more efficient turnover in cases and closing of cases, despite the fact that they are carrying additional responsibilities that the investigators in the other HRCs are not. I also want to address the obvious question when we're talking about budgets, of how the operating budget of the HRC might be cut while still allowing it to remain in operation. Since the vast majority of Human Rights Commission's income pays salaries and benefits and payroll taxes, as is the case in just about every organization, public and private, we must inevitably look to reduction in staff in times of economic downturn. The Executive Committee of the HRC has looked into this option and found it to be unfeasible for a simple reason. The federal funding that HRC receives from EEOC and HUD is based on the amount of casework handled by the Human Rights Commission's investigative staff. The only staff that the HRC currently has are one office manager and three investigators, one of whom is currently serving as the interim Executive Director. So any reduction in staff would have to be in the investigative staff, and it would result in a proportional decrease in federal funding. So cutting staff may save expenses, but it also costs income, and therefore, isn't feasible. If we don't have investigators, the Human Rights Commission can't fulfill its function, and that leads us back into the same situation of the functions of the HRC being mandated.
Ms. Hartman.
Excuse me, I have the unpopular role of timekeeper. I just wanted to alert you that there's about two minutes left, and we do want to have time for questions, so thank you very much.
I'm right on track, thank you.
All righty.
I just wanted to add, in terms of other operating expenses other than staff, those that can be, have already been cut to the bare bones. In fact, commissioners have been buying paper for the office. We're well aware of how to scrimp and will do so as much as is needed. Before closing, I'd like to tell you what we are currently doing and have already done to ensure responsible fiscal management and thorough financial reporting. The HRC has just undergone an internal audit by the urban county government. The draft audit report has been provided to us, and we are formulating our responses. You want to go ahead and hand out the? Kami's going to hand out the current budget that we're working with for fiscal 11 that includes the amount that we are requesting from the urban county government. So anyway, we've received the draft audit report, and the report contains a number of recommendations with regards to record-keeping, reporting to the full commission, and accountability standards. Some of the recommendations in the draft audit report are already being implemented or were implemented prior to the release of the draft report. The Executive Committee, the interim Executive Director, and the office manager are all committed to implementing all of the recommendations contained in the audit, and we are grateful for the fiscal guidance that this audit has provided to us. The Human Rights Commission is well-prepared to carry out the work that it needs to do. We currently have a full complement of commissioners who offer their time and their roots in the community to further the purpose of the Human Rights Commission. With an active commission, active committees, and a dedicated staff, we are certain that, given adequate funding at this critical time, the Lexington Fayette Human Rights Commission can thrive and serve this community well in the coming years. As I said, you've received packets. I would encourage you to refer back to those if you have any questions, and I simply ask that you keep this agency in operation as mandated by law and the right thing for the citizens of this community.
Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Lane? Uh, council, okay, we're signing on, so, Councilmember Lane, go ahead, since I've called on you, and then Councilmember Feigl, Gordon, and Beard.
Okay. And looking at your proposed budget for fiscal year 11, you're showing item number 27 and 28 are showing $120,000. That would be payables and line of credit. Are these the issues that are coming forward from previous management?
That's correct.
Where you have a lot of payables that haven't been paid?
That's correct.
If the council were, you know, first, let me say, our budget is extremely tight, and you'd have to have, you know, majority of the councilmembers to approve additional funding. If additional funding were provided this year, could it be under the context that maybe it would be a one-time additional funding and then go back more in line with previous funding?
It would certainly help. I think what's also important to note, however, is that the budget of the HRC has consistently been cut over the past few years and is at a significantly lower level than it is for the other Human Rights Commissions in the state. And I do believe that the cuts in the allocations from the urban county council in conjunction with poor management have resulted in the indebtedness issue. So I do think that the urban county council needs to really look at what would constitute adequate funding, and that the $180,000 or $190,000 that we have been given in the last few years is really not sufficient.
And if this additional funding is not provided, you have no other sources of income?
The only other sources of income that we have consistently are grants from HUD and the EEOC, and those are tied to the number of cases that are handled. The number of cases that are handled result from how many people come forward with issues. The number of people who come forward has everything to do with our visibility in the community, and right now, our community outreach efforts are severely hampered by our budget situation.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. How many employees do you currently have? And I apologize, I don't have my packet with me.
We have four employees in the office, and we also retain an attorney.
But that's on just a contract basis?
Is that correct?
Yes. And I'll just reiterate again what Councilmember Lane said. This is going to be a very, very difficult request.
I understand.
In light of what's going on in the city. So I guess I'm kind of looking through here to see what, what we can eliminate.
Absolutely.
What, what are you talking about in terms of maintenance and repairs?
I'm going to let our office manager deal that. That is basically like service contracts on our copier.
Could you, could you go to the microphone, please? Thank you.
That refers to service contracts, like for our copier, our computers, keeping the equipment running, which is very old equipment, so it kind of takes a little bit to keep running.
Okay. What about furniture and equipment?
That whole line item is basically a, it's a computer lease that is, leases for some computers that's leased to own. We had to update some equipment a few years ago, and that, that has actually paid off in December. That, so the computers will be ours. The lease is paid off in December.
December 11?
Of 2010.
10.
But it will, the amount that's listed on here, the $3,000, that is what it will take to pay it off, you know, by December.
And that's just for the computer lease? What's the, what's the furniture?
Well, that's just the category, the overall category.
Okay.
If we had any furniture requests, that would have been included in that.
Okay.
But the only thing that's included in this line item is the computers.
Is the computer lease. Okay, what, what can, what can you do in terms of reducing costs?
Well, like I said, we've already gone through it and reduced costs as much as we can. We've been operating this year without, or at least for the last several months, without enough money to even buy office supplies. So the numbers that we've worked with here, one of the budget cuts that is not, you know, explained here, but this presumes that we go another year without an executive director and save the money from that salary. So that's obviously the biggest savings that we've represented in this budget. Obviously, the other payroll, employee benefits, and tax accounts cannot be affected. The commission attorney is listed here, and it's been several months since we've been able to pay the commission attorney, and he's been gracious enough to allow that debt to continue until we are in a position to pay it off. Looking through some of the other items, again, we've just really looked hard at the specifics, cut everything from previous levels wherever possible. This really is a bare-bones budget.
And the business and conference travel?
There are required conferences each year that the investigative staff must attend. Do you want, if you want specifics on those, we'd be glad to provide those.
The income listed from EEOC and HUD basically covers that business and conference travel. It's required travel by EEOC and HUD, but they give us the funding for that. So the income listed at the bottom of the page includes the money, you know, for that travel. So it's only travel that we are actually reimbursed for.
And it's mandated.
Yeah, mandated by our contract.
Can you elaborate just a little bit on, on the, the mismanagement that you've talked
I, I ran into, I met a lady recently who had been a commissioner 10 years ago when Mr. Wharton was first hired, and she had read in the paper about the financial problems of the commission, and she said very graciously, "William never really did like to share bad news." And so I think that, I can only assume that his approach was that he had a lot of connections and was going to find a way out of the situation, and he didn't want to alarm the Budget Committee and the Commission, and so he kept this information from us. I really don't know of any other way to say that. We got budget reports at every commission meeting that indicated that things were fine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon, then Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hartman, for being here, and I do value the Human Rights Commission work. I think it's very important in our community, so thank all of you. Could you clarify for me, and believe it or not, people watch these meetings on TV, and I think it's important that the public be clear on what you're asking. The $245,320, is that total a new ask, a new request, or is that inclusive of money that's in the budget proposal?
It's inclusive of the money that's in the draft budget.
So can you state again what the exact amount above and beyond the budget is that's being requested?
The difference is between $245,320 and $180,000, so...
About $65,000.
$65,000.
Okay. So you're requesting about $65,000 extra dollars?
That's correct. I hear it's a, it's $166,000. I'm sorry, the mayor's recommended amount was $166,000. I was working with, with this year's budget, so it's more than a, it's more than $65,000, and it's more than a 40% increase over the recommended allocation.
So $166,960 is in the current proposed budget? Okay. And you're requesting the difference then up to the $245,320? Okay. And can you also clarify a little bit of line 27 and 28 on your projected budget? On this line of credit, $50,000, what exactly is that?
The line of credit was initially established to help make ends meet during the delays in federal funding coming in. So originally, the intent was, we vouchered for a certain amount from EEOC or HUD, they are experiencing delays at processing that, we know X amount will be coming in, and so the line of credit was used to meet expenses that, you know, where cash flow was lagging behind due to delays in federal monies. As we got further into this, this fiscal year, it was clear that we needed to use whatever means we had to keep the agency open until we faced a new budget cycle and could hopefully get some relief. And so currently, the line of credit has been used for operating expenses, including payroll. That is inappropriate, that is not the intent of the use of the line of credit, but it was the only option that we had in order to keep the agency open this long.
How much of that $50,000 are you using for operations?
I think we're, for operations specifically, the total debt is up to about $45,000 right now. The budget shows an additional $5,000 in case that is needed. Some of that was already out when the new officers took office, so Kami, do you know if that's all been used for operating expenses, or if some of that has been used for any other purposes?
[inaudible]
purposes? The majority of it has been for payroll.
Payroll, did you say?
Yeah.
And then, I know that in this current fiscal year, the administration asked everyone to cut their budgets. This amount of money that you're requesting, does that restore any of the cuts? I think you were asked to make cuts also, were you not? Does that go above and beyond the cuts?
Well, it does to the extent that we're asking for money to pay off the debt. In terms of the other expenses, there is an overall reduction. We would have had to make overall reductions in any case. I mean, obviously, we submitted a budget that reflected cuts, and the biggest cut that we've been able to offer is to leave the executive director position vacant until we can afford to rehire.
Okay, and just to clarify, you said you have four employees?
That's correct.
On the organizational chart in our little bit of our, excuse me, which four people are those?
Three investigative staff, one of whom is serving as interim executive director, and one office manager.
Okay. And then one last question. Are any of the, do you have expenses that are not operating that are directly related to either attorney fees or some kind of fees related to the situation with the former director that you're trying to pay for?
We, no, we are trying to pay, he, when he was terminated, he had a backlog of sick pay that needed to be, needs to be bought out, and that has not been fully repaid yet. But that would be considered a payroll expense.
Would this money that you're requesting pay his sick leave?
Yes, the 2010 payables of $70,000 includes that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm trying to reconcile a few things, and I'm having trouble. This payroll tax account?
Mm-hmm.
What is that exactly?
I could probably field an answer, but I've been out of the...
That includes employer's payroll taxes and the retirement, employer's portion of the retirement.
So the part of the taxes that needs to be paid by the employer and...
The payroll tax in Fayette County is paid by the employee, not by you all?
I'm referring to like Social Security and Medicare.
Oh, that...
And...
Department of Commerce and those types of things?
Yes, and then the employer's contribution, retirement contributions are included under that, which is the bulk of that amount.
And then the line of credit is shown as an expense. Line of credit is a liability, it's not an expense.
The Human Rights Commission has been operating on a cash basis accounting. We'll be switching to a modified accrual accounting for fiscal 11. So given the existing accounting system, it's cash in and cash out, income and expenses, so that's why it shows there. But when you see reports from the commission, starting in fiscal 11, there will be modified accruals, so instead of showing those as expenses, they'll show as payables.
And last question, the $118,000 you mentioned initially, how is that handled and how was it handled to overspend $118,000?
Again, I, you know, this is a situation that was inherited by the current, the current executive committee of the Human Rights Commission. These are financial situations that only came to light after the termination of the executive director. This is the information, this is the history of information that had not been, that the executive director had not been open with the commission about.
You're still going to have to help me a little bit, I think. And that involves, did the $118,000 go into his pocket?
No.
Did he overspend extravagantly over the budget, or what?
It was spending over the budget, it accumulated over time. Deficits were carried forward from one year to the next. The line of credit was overly relied upon, and by the time the current officers took office at the beginning of this year, the monies that had been allocated for fiscal 10 had largely already been spent, and there was very little revenue left to expect. And so debts have continued to accumulate through the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay, last question. Are there raises embedded in this for the staff?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember James, then Councilmember Henson, then Lawless.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
The vacancies that currently exist, including the lack of an official executive director, what's the effect of that on the cases that you'll see?
The effect of that on the investigative cases is indirect. It's minimal except for how it plays out indirectly. The executive director is the primary position that does community outreach work and gives visibility for the commission in the community, and that visibility is what lets people know where they can come when they have issues that need, for which they need recourse, issues of discrimination. So without having that public visibility, people aren't aware of us, and in fact, the number of complaints that have come into the office has sharply dropped off since we have been able to be out there publicly, just being visible, having booths at the various, you know, events, summer events, having, buying tables at the appropriate banquets and so forth, so that people know that the Human Rights Commission is part of their community and working with them on these issues.
Okay, and you mentioned very briefly that the number of cases, the reimbursement from HUD and EEOC, is it directly related to the number of cases that are received or closed, or what?
It's both received then closed, or just closed? Just closed.
Okay. So the fewer cases you get, the fewer cases you can close?
That's right.
That lower the reimbursement from the other agencies?
That's correct.
When do the payments come in from the EEOC and the HUD?
The HUD comes, am I correct in that the HUD comes in? HUD comes in in September or October, and EEOC? EEOC pays us twice a year roughly at the midpoint and the endpoint of the year. The payments from EEOC have been considerably delayed in the last couple of years.
Okay, and they're looking back at the past year of your closed cases?
Is that correct? Looking at the past year?
Okay.
You need to sit right here, because we're going to keep asking you questions.
Yes, EEOC's caseload is directly related to what we processed the previous year. Once they will look at our, you know, our case processing, at this point, it goes through, I think they will cut off in June. They will see how many cases that we have processed at this point. That is what's going to affect the numbers that they will give us for next year. So it's actually, you know, if we don't meet our contract, we don't get all of the money. But then, if we don't meet our contract, they lower next year's contract, so we don't have the opportunity to get more money.
So your projections that are here are based on...
Actual production at this point.
And are considerably lower than they were last year as a result of the reduction in cases.
Okay.
Especially the HUD. The HUD is literally cut in half.
And that's all based on the case numbers? Okay. Now, is that, are you, is there any way that anyone could say that the cases are just taking longer? So, okay, so it's clearly about the number of people?
We keep track of case processing time. We have a goal that we try to keep it within. Actually, our contracts with EEOC and HUD state that we're supposed to complete them within a certain amount of days. We always try to keep, you know, within those guidelines. So I mean, our investigations have not been hampered any, because it's had to be our primary focus.
Okay. And thinking about what the mandate is for urban county government, you mentioned that there's an actual mandate in state statute that regulates it. Do you know what that statute is by chance?
After this, I'll return to our attorney.
If you have to, you have to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
There's two things. The, we're one of the, the Human Rights Commission was one of the original agencies created under the ordinance back in the '60s, and we also, we're allowed, the local entity is allowed to create a local human rights commission under KRS 344, and I believe it's 230, but it's under the Kentucky Civil Rights Statute.
Okay, and what exactly does it say? I know that the terminology Beth used was that urban county government is to provide adequate funding. Does it actually state what we're supposed to be paying for?
What that refers to is under the Community Development Block Grant that the city has applied for last year and received, specifically states that the urban county government will support fair housing initiatives to a point that will, well, it does not say financially funded, but it says, "Support all fair housing initiatives." And there is a review process by HUD or to determine that whether the entity is supporting the fair housing initiatives that they, they say they're, that are obligated to do under the Community Development Block Grant. And at this point, with the, I think there's a serious question whether that is in compliance, the city is in compliance with the fair housing initiatives by not allowing us the adequate people to staff it. So if there is a review process, it could be initiated by HUD to determine whether that, the urban county government is in compliance with the funding of the fair housing initiatives.
Okay, but what you just talked about sounds like it's attached or affiliated with the CDBG and HUD, and I just mean the general, the general fund obligation financially. Is there an attachment between the creating ordinance or statutes originating with what general fund dollars that we need to contribute to the HRC?
No, but what the ordinance says in the preamble of the Human Rights Commission says to endeavor, well, let me say this, let me say this. The purpose of the statute, which says it's to receive, investigate, and adjudicate complaints involving the discrimination, the seven protected classes of race, sex, national origin, you know, the fair housing, religion, age, and now, of course, and we're the only law enforcement, we're the only enforcement agency of the fairness ordinance here, which was passed. What it says is that basically, to perform that function under the statute, you have to have the adequate funding to receive, initiate, and adjudicate those complaints. And we receive and we initiate, but our adjudication process has been curtailed.
Okay. And I don't know who answered this, Beth, maybe you. To whom do you pay rent?
The city.
So the $4,200, the $4,200 that's listed here would actually be coming back to us?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want, these questions may have been easy, but the salaries, the $160,000, does that include the executive director position?
No, it does not. It presumes that that position will remain vacant for the coming year while we get out of debt.
Okay. So is the acting executive director also like a working person with, that handles cases?
Yes, he's sitting right here, and he does handle some cases, and he also is serving as interim executive director and overseeing the other investigative staff.
So, and there are three people that handle cases, correct?
Correct.
And, so do you think that process works, or do you find that the Human Rights Commission is suffering by not having an executive director?
I think the community, the Human Rights Commission is suffering by not having an executive director at this point. Again, the community outreach activities and the connections in the community is a big part of the executive director position and something that obviously cannot be handled by somebody who's working in that capacity only on a part-time basis. And that's how people, you know, of course, find out about us. I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that question, because there was a second part I wanted to address?
The only other question I had was about how many cases do you handle a year?
Oh, I was going to say that the handling of cases is certainly being done in a very thorough and efficient manner still. So the handling of the cases that come in has not been hampered, just the number of cases coming in has dropped off. But I'll refer to the investigative staff about number of cases handled.
Typically, what we investigate in a number of years is between 250, 300 cases per year. Like, like has been previously mentioned, the housing cases have dropped off. We did 30-something cases last year, and this year's, we haven't even got to the halfway point of what we investigated last year. So typically, and I'll just reiterate that I'm a part-time investigator. My previous, my previous position before the interim executive director, I was compliance director, which supervised the investigative unit. I had a, so there's only two full-time investigators right now. I'm still a part-time investigator, I only keep a caseload of about a couple of cases. But, but none of, like was said, none of the investigations that we, we have been investigating have been hampered. We've still, we've met our, we met our, we recently met our EEOC contract on the employment side with employment cases, a little ahead of schedule, so we've investigated, every year, EEOC contracts us to investigate a certain number of cases, and we've, we met that on time, and we're getting, we're also getting ready with HUD to finalize our contract with them, so investigations have not been hampered.
Have you seen that the cases have declined over the years?
Yes.
So there used to be a lot more cases than there are now?
Correct. When I, when I started back in 1997 with the commission, we had, in addition to an executive director, an office manager, and a full-time community relations coordinator, we had four full-time investigators. And they had a, they had a full caseload per investigator. And over the years, we've, as we've lost people, we've been, we've been unable to fill those positions. So less investigators investigating, you know, more complaints, plus, as Beth mentioned, doing the community relations, community outreach, doing workshops and the like.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, if you would be, yeah, it would be helpful. I think you're going to do just what I was going to suggest. If you, if you would introduce those who are speaking, or if you all would introduce yourselves and the role, that would be helpful to council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Dove spoke earlier, he is the attorney for the commission. Raymond Sexton is the acting interim director, and I want to add that Ray is currently serving in that capacity without any additional compensation.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your hard work, and for those of you who came onto a board with a lot of problems to solve, and I appreciate your service to the community, and I think it's a very important one. One of the questions I have, and Councilmember Lane brought this up, the line of credit at $50,000, is that something you have to pay off this year, or is this the line of credit that you are, have years to pay off, but the cash came in?
It has a maturity date, it always has an annual maturity date, and so far, the bank has always extended that, granted the extension for another year.
So that's not a real direct cost this year?
It's not something that's going to be paid off in fiscal 10, but we definitely need to be working on getting that paid off in fiscal 11, particularly considering that it was used for operating expenses and not cash.
Certainly, I understand, but I mean, it's not a, it's not a line item cost or expense for this year?
It's payable.
Okay. And the... And the FY10 payables, is that the same with that?
Yes, those are payables, those, that's money that needs to be paid for expenses that were accrued during the year.
But it doesn't have to be paid in this fiscal year?
It can't be paid in fiscal 10 because there's no money, so that's why we're asking for additional funds.
Right. So, but it doesn't necessarily have to be paid in FY11?
Yes, the, the debts that are carrying over from fiscal 10 do have to be paid in fiscal 11. There'd be very little of that that could be deferred for another year.
Okay. And the other question I had for you, are you all doing anything to recover any monies that the previous director misused?
The draft audit report that we received did not show any indication and said in the introductory material that there was no indication of any illegal uses of funds. So the funds were in fact all spent appropriately.
Just too much.
They were just spent too much compared to the income.
Well, I would imagine on the tax liability, there would be, that there would certainly be some fees and interest attached to that, which would be an expense that was incurred due to his, you know, malfeasance. So would that be something that you all could recover in some amount?
I'm going to turn to our attorney if he'll answer that question, Mr. Dove. And also Tammy Reed has spoken with the group, and I did not introduce Tammy, my apologies.
That is something we have not explored, but I do, I think that'd be very difficult to try to do, to recover any interest in penalties. So I mean, certainly, we can look into it, but I think it would be a difficult step to recover from an individual.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for coming in today, and we appreciate, again, as people have said, the service to our community that you provide. We got a few questions for you. Just a quick one, going back to that payable, that $70,000, you said that part of that was money owed to the previous director for sick time? Is that the only thing that you guys owe him for?
That is at this point. It was annual leave, and yes, his salary has been paid at this point.
Okay. And how much is that, out of that $70,000?
It's about $8,000. The biggest line item in the payables currently is Kentucky retirement.
And, and that retirement, is that for all the employees?
Mm-hmm.
So the agency wasn't collecting and paying that money?
It's the employee share, or excuse me, the employer's share of the retirement funds that has not been paid. And penalties have accrued. We are currently managing the payments on those accounts so that no additional penalties will accrue.
And how many years had, was it not paid?
It was actually just a number of months.
Okay. Has the board all been replaced since the firing of the previous director?
Not, the, the commission has not completely turned over, but the executive positions have. So the executive committee consisting of the chair, vice chair, secretary, and treasurer are all new, new people in those positions as of January 1.
Okay. And it's my understanding that an audit's been done by our internal auditor, and that, do you know when the audit was completed?
The draft audit was provided to us last week, on the 25th, and we will be meeting with the auditor on the 16th to present our preliminary response and find out what we may need to change before we submit our final responses.
Okay. I guess as a council member, I would like to see that audit.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm actually on the audit board. We can't see it until you guys provide your response to the audit. So is there an expedience that you could put on putting together that response so that we could see that audit and the recommendations made in that audit? What I'm interested in is recommend, what recommendations are being made?
Mm-hmm.
And where you guys as an agency are in implementing those changes?
Okay, we, we met last night to go through the draft audit. We do have substantial responses to each of the findings, so it may be that after our meeting on the 16th, we can wrap things up fairly quickly.
Okay. And I guess the other question I have is this line of credit, you said there's $5,000 open on there.
Right. Right now, it's, it's at $45,000, but we have gone ahead and placed in the budget $50,000 in the event that any additional money is needed to meet payroll between now and July 1st.
Okay. And is it your intent that you're going to pay off that $45,000 with the money that you're asking us to increase your budget for?
Yes.
Okay. And on page 229 of our budget book, it shows, if I understand this correctly, that your request for FY11 was $238,650. And it seems like your request now, that was your initial question to the mayor, your request now is increased.
That's correct.
Can you explain that and the difference?
Yes, this has to do with the new folks stepping into the situation and the learning curve involved and new circumstances that have come to light since we submitted that budget, including some of the fines that have been or will be levied that we were not aware of at the time.
Okay. And can you give us just, for clear understanding, the difference between what you're requesting now and that $238,650?
Basically, we went back and redid the budget, so I can't tell you item by item, but I know that some of the costs or debts that came to light since that budget was put together included the, like I said, the fines. We, we had, I believe, $2,000 in fines from the Retirement Committee, Commission, and Tammy, you had something to add on this one? I thought you might. This is the gal who keeps track of all these numbers. She knows them far better than I do.
The basic, the budget that was initially submitted for 2011 basically had us operating at the level we would love to operate at. When we, the budget we have resubmitted here has us operating at a bare minimum, basically keeping the office open, keeping a few supplies in, the phones on, but it, the bulk of it, other than, you know, salaries and so forth, is the debt that we've incurred.
Okay, so.
Right, that was not included in the initial budget.
Right, so there's, so it's, while we've cut our budget as far as what we plan to spend on actually anything, salaries and so forth, we've cut everything that we could possibly cut, but it is just where we have this outstanding debt that needs to be paid. It's, in order to keep the office open, we have to have phones. People have to be able to reach us.
Sure.
We have to have computers. Our HUD and EEOC cases are all processed via the web.
Okay, let me interrupt you just a second. I, I think I didn't ask the question very clearly. I wasn't asking you to articulate what all is in the budget, but a number, so I'm looking at a number of $238,650. What is the number now that you're requesting from us? Is it the $245,320?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you again for, for coming to, to help us understand the, the request and appreciate your all service to the community. It's difficult serving on a board, and I know it's a lot of many hours doing that. One question I have is, have you explored financing the, the items 27, 28 with any financial institutions?
Well, go ahead.
Is it possible to, to finance those two items? If you, if you could spread it over two or a three-year period, you would be well within your, your ability to, to do that.
Well, we, we don't have collateral to offer, would be one issue, and, you know, obviously, we would have to be able to show our ability to repay that over even a longer period of time, and in order to do that, we will need to have increased income. So, I, you know, I think it would be worth looking into if it has not already been exhausted.
I see Ed shaking his head. You want to address it, Ed, or? We're just looking for creative ways to try to get it done.
Fantastic. And when this came to light, when this financial situation came to light, we were also trying to find creative ways, and we contacted, the one bank we've been dealing with for years was, was very helpful, but we also wanted to contact the other banks to see if we could maybe work out something to what you were saying, and, and they were not receptive.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. No one, that, no one else has signed on. Any more questions or comments for our guests? Hearing none, we can proceed. Thank you all very much for visiting with us today.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Next on, Chair, you may want to move up so you're available to us. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the discussion on positions eliminated in the mayor's proposed budget fiscal year 2011. There's a note on our agenda that a closed session may be required if we, if the discussion moves into specific positions or individuals. Chair, you want to give us some guidance on this?
I think there were several questions at the last committee at the hall that a couple council members had about wanting requests for information, identifying who the employees were that were scheduled to be, their positions to be eliminated, also detailed information about how long they had been with the government, what their background was, some job descriptions about what their duties were. So to carry the discussion, I know that Commissioner Rumke and her department has provided a lot of information dealing with these very questions. So I guess if council members have a specific question about what they were provided, then that's how we would proceed.
I believe, who was it that was, that specifically introduced this? Councilmember Henson?
Councilmember Henson and Councilmember Gordon have specific questions and specific data requests that they had asked.
I actually have concern over one particular employee, and.
So if that's the case, we'll, we'll need to go into a closed session.
I would make a motion that we go into closed session.
Glenda, yeah. We're going to get a comment from Law. All right, you want to help us with this?
Right. Under the open meeting statute, it allows us to go into closed session for personnel issues if we're talking about the appointment, dismissal, or discipline of an employee, but dismissal is not the same thing as a layoff. Okay? So we, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I withdraw the motion.
I know that Ms. Rumke provided a listing of all the employees that were scheduled to be terminated. Can we use that listing kind of as a centerpiece of your discussion if you have questions about any reorganization that was proposed, any particular position or duties that maybe you frame your questions in regards to all public submitted?
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I guess the way I understand that, then, if we have questions about individual people being laid off, we're just supposed to put that information out there and ask those questions in public?
I was very surprised by that.
I'm very surprised about that as well. I don't know how the ordinance, that's, you're quoting, but help us, tell, can you come up to the mic again? Yeah.
The statute.
Okay.
And what it says is, I lost my page here. When talking about personnel issues, and here's what the statute says, discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting the employee, member, or student's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret.
All right. So your interpretation is that termination or layoff.
They're different things.
Is termination and layoff specifically provided for elsewhere in the specific language? Because my interpretation of this would be that it, this, this provision is designed to protect the employees, and the, a termination action, in my view, would be analogous to any of those identified situations.
I mean, it's a difference of opinion. If you all disagree and you want to talk about these in closed session.
I would, I would say that, you know, that that's parsing it way too finely. Councilmember Stanton.
You know, I, I would think that if we're only going to talk about eliminating a position based on the position is one thing, but if we talk about individual names, I would think we would need to do that in closed session.
Right.
That's the difference I'm seeing here. If we say we don't need an HR analyst, we can talk about why we don't need another analyst. But if we talk about why we don't need the person associated with that, that's a big difference. I think that would warrant closed session. I would tend to agree with that.
Okay. I just think, I think we need to get a sense of protocol here.
If I may add, through, through the discussion, if you get into maybe the performance of a particular individual, I don't think that would be appropriate to be discussed in public.
Right. All right. So we've said, let me just summarize here, that if our discussion moves into a specific employee, individual, or the performance of a specific individual or employee, then it is appropriate for us to move into closed session. All right? So we'll monitor our proceeding accordingly. Councilmember Myers, you have, you were.
If that's what we're going to do, then I think I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
All right. I just want to, as Chair, I want to alert everyone that I may intervene at any time, and I encourage anyone else to if we think we are moving into that, into that territory that we just described, okay? Councilmember Lawless.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could you just clearly state what is, we want to discuss at this time? Because I'm, I'm a little bit confused of what we're discussing.
We are, we are, my, my understanding is that the council members Henson and Gordon inquired about the, those employees who are, who have been identified to be laid off, The positions. Councilmembers Henson and Gordon, why don't you help me here? So that it's clear what it is we are, the purpose today. Thank you.
I, Councilmember Lane, I brought this forward because there is a one employee that I have concern about that's very close to retirement, just a few months away. that I have concern about that's very close to retirement, just a few months away, and her position was being eliminated. I don't really have a problem with any of the other positions. From what I've seen, Leslie Jarvis and Commissioner Rumke provided very good information. But the one position I, I do have a problem with, and I feel like we really need to go into closed session, discuss that one.
All right.
I also had questions about a couple of the positions and employees that currently held them.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, but could you ask Councilmember Gordon what she wanted to accomplish too? That'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I also have concerns about specific people in specific jobs who are very close to retirement and why they're, some of the questions surrounding those people.
It sounds like to me that we will need to move into closed session, so the Chair will entertain a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of discussion of personnel matters.
I'll move that we close, we move into closed session.
Councilman?
For discussion of specific personnel matter.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Second to the motion that we move into closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. So we will move into closed session.